All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting for September 8th. Mr. Aristocazian, if you could call roll, please.
Mr. Rashudi. Dr. Shively. Dr. Beckpulley.
Here.
Dr. White.
Here.
Mrs. Levy. Mr. Fashionetto.
Here.
Mr. Lozey. Mrs. Schenkel.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. We begin tonight with courtesy, the floor for visitors. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. I have nothing to report. Dr. Still, anything to report?
No report.
Any unfinished business? Seeing none, we have one recommendation to approve, and that's the appointment of Dr. Frank Kelly as our new chief people services officer. We had a motion to approve item 701. Mrs. Patrick, is there a second? Dr. White. Motion and a second. Mr. Aristocazian, if you could pull the board on item 701.
Mr. Rashudi.
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley.
Yes.
Dr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Levy.
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto.
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Frank, Dr. Frank Kelly. Yes. I almost said your other name. Congratulations. Welcome back. We're excited to have you. Seeing familiar face back in Bethlehem. We were lucky to have a good pool of candidates, but ultimately, Dr. Frank Kelly rose up to the top, experienced at almost every level and superintendentcy as well, and really lucky to have you back here. We look forward to getting started. Thank you. Any new business? Any courtesy of the floor? Open forum. Motion to adjourn. Patrick, all in favor? We are adjourned. Let the record stand three minutes. That's my new, my new record. It's gonna be a tough one to beat, but that was. It did beat VOTEC. It had more than one item, but it still beat them. All right, we're gonna move right into our facilities committee meeting. Dr. Beckpulley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So welcome to the September 8th facilities committee meeting. We will start with courtesy of the floor. Any public comment about agenda items? There'll be another courtesy of the floor at the end of the meeting for any item you'd like to bring before the board. I don't see any discussion items. Do we have any last minute discussion items to add? All right, so that gets us to our information items. First one up is 3.01, an energy update.
Nothing major to report here, only that we'll be taking advantage of this fall to look at our natural gas purchasing for the future. So you'll see something here in the coming weeks or month to lock in some natural gas into the future.
Any questions by that? All right, that brings us to 3.02. Pretty exciting stuff. We got Fountain Hill Construction and Summer Project Update.
Yes, I want to take you on a quick journey through Fountain Hill and Freedom High School, but just to get us back, we just finished summer, right? Facilities, time to shine. So we were out doing our thing this summer, getting schools ready. If you hadn't known or heard, we are knocking down the old Fountain Hill and you can see it has some, just some, some progress photos for everyone to see. We take a quick journey here from the start down to the, this is like sexy pictures for facilities guys, you know? How our building's built, exhibit A, you know, great, great educational value here. But as we continue through, see, you know, we get smaller and smaller and smaller from the old Fountain Hill. And you keep on going there. Little aerial site picture gives you an idea of how tight the site is and will be for construction and what that means for us and for the neighbors. So that that remaining piece there, stay back on that slide there for us, or Karen? That building remains right where the front door will be in the new building. So the new building will extend probably beyond, a little bit beyond where that green truck is on the, on the picture. So a little bit narrower and longer of a building than the old one. And you can keep on going. And we just, little bit of a countdown picture here. I didn't get a one, but you can see the, the old stair tower there by the elevator shaft coming down. Down to two, and then our, oh, go back to one. This is credit to Marie Bachmann. This is our Fountain Hill Parthenon picture here of the, you know, the structure on the hill overlooking Fountain Hill as it came down. But next slide, and we are just down to the pile of bricks. That was Friday three days ago. So all the heavy equipment is offsite and now it's full, full site work progress.
Mark, I have deputized myself as unofficial construction manager on my walks by, and I can say that the orderliness of the demolition and how systematic it is. Those jersey barriers and the fence that are on top of them have prevented anything from going beyond the site, onto the street or into the neighborhood. So taking down a large 90-year-old building and doing it in a systematic way that respects the neighbors and, you know, gives, gives you a little sense of what the old high school was like as the last structure up there. But also gives you a lot of hope for what can be done and watching those large trucks separate now the steel from the stone, from the glass, from everything that's there in anticipation of a, a clean site and the beginning of construction. So we're on, I think we're on time, right, Mark?
We are exactly on schedule. So, you know, so far, so good. So the demolition finished when it was supposed to finish. The site work is now beginning when it's supposed to begin. So we're right on track to try and get as much of the site work done ahead of the winter freeze. And we're great, great position to do that right now. So everything's on track. To keep it there for 19 more months, we'll be in good shape. Semitals are coming in, you know, we're just looking at, you know, confirming colors and layout, different, all the, gosh, untold amounts of things have to be selected and confirmed and picked and ordered and delivered and all that. So that is underway currently and again, on track, making progress on schedule. All right. Besides that, we did a couple other things this summer. So just a quick snapshot of, of projects of the board approved to, to complete over this summer. So we wrapped up the auditorium renovation at Freedom. That was, that was much needed and a great project. If you haven't seen it, we'll have opportunities to see that very soon. We did some less visible type stuff with water heater replacements at Marvahn and Lincoln. We did intercom replacements at Calypso and Farmersville. We replaced the Governor Wolf roof, and that is now a deep breath heading into, you know, another rainy season here. Much, much needed and appreciated now. And also another project in the wings that we approved, the the field house at Freedom High School, that we've gone through the land development process with Bethlehem Township. It's all approved and will be out to bid later this month and will come back with an award recommendation in November. But all that $3 million, $3.6 million worth of work, we had that facility improvement grant to offset a little bit with the, the Governor Wolf roof. And we've made it through the summer. Everything is, is done and ready to go. And all those projects are now serving our, our kids and community. So not to get everyone familiar with all the pictures and expect that every single month, but figured in August or September, we'd, we'd share some, but kind of before and after, you know, some roof pictures up top of Governor Wolf and then the new new cap sheet, new roof covering that entire building. Again, much needed and appreciated to have that done. Next picture, ah, and we're into the, head into the auditorium at Freedom. Top left there, you can see the before with our lovely green asbestos floor tile under our blue chairs with the 1969 vintage wood paneling across the back of the auditorium. Carpet that had served its, served us well over the years, but was definitely tired. This was during construction. We had removed the asbestos. We'd removed the seats. We have started painting at this point. And I'm gonna take you on a quick tour here. So if you just give us a moment here, Karen's gonna jump out and jump back in with that nice big space. We were able to get some different photos of our progress. So hold on. And this was again during, during demolition. We're gonna take a fly around. You can see at the back there, we, we built a new sound booth, if you will, for the, the theater productions. That wood paneling of old is now just a half wall. We are, if you pan down to the left, I think the lights are not yet on there. You can scroll up to the ceiling. We were painting the, the world famous coffin ceiling at Freedom High School. Come, excuse me, come back to the, to the front and on the floor, you can see where we had to trench in new electric, a new electric for floor lighting to comply with current codes. You need egress lighting for all of our occupants. You can see the trenches on the floor. Before, we had a stage extension that Mr. Fashionetto probably built some weekend with the stage crew that in hindsight, we're glad we put a real extension that's structurally sound and stable and can take an entire dance troupe tapping their, to their hearts delight. So we built that out. In the back, what you can't see is a, now a, an accessible elevator to now make the stage accessible for all of our students. And I think those are the highlights coming around there. But it was a hot mess all summer long, you know, dust and it was, it was raw construction. All right, and we're gonna, that's the before. That's the, we had the before, we have the during, and then we'll look at some more before and after pictures. Go back to the presentation, Karen. Just one more shot. In the hallway of the school, as you approach the auditorium, we had, just go from, from current slide up top and you'll pop right back in. As you entered, we had, again, the classic wood paneling from 1969, burying the old ticket booth way back in the day. This was actually right next to the outside of the building way back. So now that's been replaced with a much more modern display board for, you know, playbills and we've got doors now on the auditorium to go into that space. So it's a, it's a tremendous upgrade, much needed upgrade for the, the Freedom students and community.
Excuse me, Mr. Stein, just a quick question. The Freedom student representative at our meeting last month had mentioned a new costume shop. Is that behind these things and is it, or is it completely in a new location?
It is out of sight. It is actually behind that wall where you see the, the playbill.
So that's in the same space that it was before.
It is in the same space. It has been cleaned out because of the construction and removal of the old ticket booths that were there. It's all, it's much larger now. There's more volume, more space. We provided a rolling, hanging racks for all the stuff that goes into theater production and accumulates and waits for the, the next show to come around and we'll need that for that show. We'll be here in 10 or 12 years, yes. So all of that has been collected in new, new storage, new, new hanging, new opportunities there to organize and collect all that.
One of the things I will mention of the, the Freedom Theater Department for many years, they have had incredible costumers making costumes. Sometimes they'll rent once in a while, but the, when you put that much effort and skill into costumes that are expensive, especially just the materials themselves, it is so good to know that they are well cared for. I mean, the scary thing in that area, I don't know if you still have them, are all the blue styrofoam heads for all the wigs and hats. I mean, ooh, but that hair and attention to the, the resource that is it's, it's a very much an environmental thought too, because they can be repurposed and restyled for other shows. And, and I just love the fact that the theater company is the parents, the students, the teachers, the directors are all a part of doing that and the storage is And the storage is key to continuing that. So thank you for the attention to that.
You're very welcome. Behind the scenes, we, we don't, I don't have any pictures of this, but, uh, we revamped all of the behind. We have a new roll up garage door, you know, that's now insulated as opposed to the old rickety thing. Um, we've got more space for, um, storage of, you know, stick lumber and, and things that are used to create all the wonderful sets that go in the, into theater, while still maintaining storage for band, uniforms, equipment, instruments. And, um, at the very end now coral uniform, uh, coral, um, uniforms as well. So then just one final, you can take us to the, the, the after, the finished product. Now, again, the, the pictures don't really do it justice. I think it's, you have to be there to see it. But, um, again, we're gonna fly around here and you can see the finished sound booth back there. Added a touch of color now to kind of give a more, uh, mature and, you know, a little, little flavor of freedom as opposed to the green floors and blue seats now. Uh, we've added the, the handrails going up, down the, the aisles, which when I attended, gosh, when I attended plays with, when my wife was a student here to see, you know, Kim Harper perform, funny thing happened at the way to the Forum in, I don't know, nineteen ninety one or so. You know, stumbling down the stairs and here I am, you know, thirty years later addressing that. But, you know, coming around to the front, you can see, uh, you know, there's a accessible companion seating added now. It's available and removable. We've, uh, painted the concrete floor, provided new carpeting, new like architecturally pleasing like sconce lighting around this, around the, um, around the walls. You come to the front, just, you know, fresh new carpeting, a little bit of, you know, black and gold in the, in the texture. The front, the stage front, we're gonna hope we treat and respect this for years to come, but we'll do our best. But it's, um, um, now again, structurally sound. They could have a, a tap recital on there and no one's gonna, gonna sweat, um, a drop of sweat worrying about it. Um, so it's a great new look. Uh, I think that's pretty much all we wanted to show, but I think in the whole process, I think we're still at eight hundred seats. We might've lost thirty trying to get the handicap and make everything work. But, um, again, plenty to meet the needs of the Freedom community.
Uh, just one more. The lighting was also updated, yeah? The stage lighting, not the, not the audience.
The stage lighting was previously updated.
Right.
And, uh, that's in great shape before we got here.
Right. And so with the updated lighting, and I think the sound was also upgraded as well.
Sound, not.
Okay, let's not go there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's good.
But with the director's booth and the lighting, are they now connected so that students can learn more programming, um, with, uh, spotting or any kind of directional lighting with that system? Are they all connected?
That system is controlled by a, a light control board that now will be in that booth as opposed, previously, I think it was up in the Crow's Nest on the second floor that was hard to get to and hard to communicate with. Now we have a conduit connecting the, the booth with the folks upstairs. So, yes, came together very nicely.
That's really industry forward thinking for students who might want to look at stagehands as a career path. So thank you.
Very, this was enough high point to end on as opposed to looking at grease trap receptacles or water heaters. Like this is the, this is the, the good stuff.
Any questions about the summer projects, Freedom, anything going on at Fountain Hill? We just approved some more colors for the gymnasium at Fountain Hill today. That's gonna look fabulous. So a ton of great work and really pretty incredible that even with this kind of scale of activity, everything is on budget, on schedule, and so we're in good shape.
Yeah.
Lots of good folks helped make it come together. Remember that next year, budget time, when Harry's giving out money? We got some projects for you.
Yeah.
I've asked this before and, and, and in other ways, but I'm just curious to know. So I know, I'm assuming that a great deal of that work is done by the folks in-house that work for our maintenance electrical divisions, all of that things. But then I know that we have external contractors that have done majority of that. It's been bitted out and contracted out. I don't, I would assume that we did not have our students that are in our VOTEC programs onsite doing that. But are there ways? I, I've asked this before, but I guess, is it realistic? Can we really have some of our students that are in our VOTEC programs be part of that process? Like we're, whether we're bidding like a small part of the project to VOTEC and say, hey, we want kids doing this. Cause it's one thing to teach them, it's another thing to be like, hey, you know, you're, I built that when I was in high school. You know what I mean? And, and for them to also get that learning experience. So it's both building in a, a love for the community, for the school district, but also actually giving realistic, like this is what a job opportunity looks like. This is what it looks like working on a site. Yes, you've had the theory, you've had the work at VOTEC, but now you're on a job site with other people. So is that a possibility?
It's a fantastic idea. Uh, the, the challenge we have is we have, say, fifty-three or four days to get all of that done. This was probably bigger than a summer project, but a lot of great folks involved. I mean, the, the school let us get in early, they moved some scheduling around. So when it comes to summer projects like this in a school district, it's a tough application. I think the best opportunity for students to get that experience is getting an apprenticeship and getting picked up by the contractors who do do the work and they get the taste from that side for sure. Would be, it would be challenging to like hire the VOTEC to do this part because once that project starts, I mean, uh, multi-prime, low bid contractors bury each other all the time. Like you're not done with that and they'll drywall over what was missing. So it'd be tough to put kids in that environment. But, I mean, I mean, we have the experiences to see what happens. We do everything, all the construction they'll see ultimately in the real world happens in our district and many locations all summer long.
I think the Fountain Hill project offers more opportunities for learning experiences for, for students. Maybe not in the actual construction of it, but I know with our previous, um, construction programs, what it looks like from drawings to fit out, what it looks like in the developmental stages. I know Mark and Arif have occasionally taken students over there to show that this is what happens on a construction site. So, and this is why something looks the way it does. So there are a lot of, we, we should parlay our, our opportunities, uh, as a learning opportunity for students whenever we have a bigger project. But there are some limitations as far as, um, you know, right to work, prevailing wage, safety, clearances, all the rest that make it hard to actually have students involved in the word work.
Um, I did want to mention that the VOTEC has the house project that we do.
Right.
So, I mean, they are getting, is that a bad word with the, wrapping up? But, um, they do have some that gives more control over those kinds of environments, so.
That's something I've, I've been aware of. I've just, I'd love to see more synergy, more opportunities. Like imagine if you could do that and, you know, doing work on a house is different than doing something on a, you know, that. So that was just my thought, but understanding all of those barriers, but maybe like a fountain hill, even if it's just, hey, we're gonna drive by and nobody touch anything, but like look. And that, you know, write a report on this, I don't know.
Anything else? That brings us to the next information item, which is three point oh three, the air quality and radon testing.
So just wanted to. Excuse me. Just wanted to bring this to the board's attention and highlight something we've been doing here for, long before I arrived. This goes back twenty years, but just to know that, um, it's that time of year again. And I mean, go ahead and advance that, Karen. We've been performing this proactive air quality testing. I think it started in two thousand and five and we've been doing it every year since. And because we know that air quality has an outsized impact on, on students' health or focus, the education, the, their attendance. So it's very important that we are providing good air quality for our students. So way back in the day, we divvied up the district into A and B, really just kind of by floor size. And we're taking that snapshot every year of half the district for the last twenty years. So we are up again this year into the, um, we're doing the B buildings this year. But, you know, what is, what is, what is indoor air quality, Mark? What is that about? So we're going through the buildings and we're measuring temperatures, humidity, carbon dioxide, which is, you know, byproduct breathing, uh, carbon monoxide, which is byproduct of combustion. Uh, volatile organic compounds, those are like, like the new car smell, right? It smells good, but it really is not good for you. You buy, you know, new, like new carpeting, you know? So the next several, uh, weeks and months, that carpet will be off gassing. It's kind of that new, uh, those are VOCs that we want to ventilate and maybe we get that out of there ultimately. And we do, um, fungal spore trap testing. So we'll, we'll do spot checks for, for mold. So we've been doing these, um, these parameters. This is a report, I just pulled out the page from Liberty High School from last time we did this. So we'll get a report, all the spaces. You know, Liberty's a big place. We don't test every space, but we went into seventy-seven different locations within Liberty High School. So it's a lot of spaces and we're, you know, logging out, you know, here, what's the carbon dioxide? You know, so based on current ventilation standards, you know, um, you walk outside and based on, you know, the readings of an observatory in Hawaii somewhere that we're currently at four hundred and thirty parts per million of CO2 in the ambient air. So when you start throwing twenty-five kids in a space, what happens? Well, we're breathing, that goes up. So we'd like to see that number, you know, say seven hundred highlight. So about eleven hundred, twelve hundred range is, you know, that's a full classroom HVAC is working. To just verify that we're in those, that parameter. Carbon monoxide, we don't want to see anything really. VOCs, we don't see very much of that. But again, we're making sure there's nothing spiking that would get in way of students might have a sensitivity, impact their ability to focus, pay attention. You know, it's great to have a, you know, conditioned space, but, you know, it's tough to learn when it's, you know, eighty-four degrees in your classroom. That's a real drag. We want to make sure we're working hard to, to, um, give a, a learning environment that's conducive to learning. Uh, so relative humidity, temperature, and then we'll run through and do spore trap testing. So everyone take a deep breath. We're all inhaling mold spores right now, cause they're all around us all the time, constantly. We just hope inside to have much less than what's outside. So for instance, you know, on this day last year, uh, last September, you know, there were five hundred, eight hundred, uh, spores per cubic meter of air outside. So walking to your car, that's what's outside. So you can see the samples there, you know, one hundred, fifty-eight, thirty, like we're orders of magnitude less than outside. That's fantastic. You have a potted plant in your classroom, there's gonna be mold spores popping off of that. So that's the kind of stuff that we're testing, making sure that we're in a, in a good place. Next slide. Now radon testing is returning. So, uh, back in the spring, there was a report that got into the press that made the analogy of the, the correlation causation. They just said that there's radon in Pennsylvania or in particular, five different, three or four different districts. And there are elementary schools in those three or four different districts. Therefore, the kids in those cities are exposed and at risk to radon. Radon's a naturally occurring, uh, gas, comes from radioactive decay of rocks and soil. So there's no requirement in Pennsylvania to test for it. There have been many efforts in the last, say, five, six years to have legislation to require it. Currently, there's none. Uh, we last tested for this about ten years ago. So it's overdue, independent of the, the study. I think it was a good time to say, all right, let's take another pulse. We've done, we've completely rebuilt the HVAC systems at, um, nine plus East Hills, ten different locations in the, in the district. So it's a great, like, all right, hey, let's see how we did, make sure it's making an impact. So we are, as the budget supports it, we'd like to get back on a every three year cadence with that. Just so it's not every decade, that's a little, it's been a little while. So we'll, um, we'll align it with our, our A and B buildings. So we'll jump in with the B buildings this year. We'll do those, primarily elementary schools are the first ones to hit. And then we'll do the A buildings next year and then we'll resume and catch everyone in three years. So that's the plan moving ahead with the radon. And I have next year for you. Okay, so in summary, we've been doing this for a while, but we're gonna hit our B buildings here, probably November. Uh, we alternate seasons as well, cause there are different, um, impacts with the time of year. So we'll do A building and B building, then we'll also alternate heating season, cooling season. So we're, we're getting, uh, different parts of the year involved. So that'll be, um, heating season B, the radon, like to get in, it'll probably be October. Uh, thanks to that study, they've been locked up and we've been negotiating with the company that we worked with ten years ago, to work directly with them instead of through our air quality company that we work with. So we'll save a couple bucks there. But, um, they'll be available by end of September, early October to commence that. The, the, uh, we're planning to do that every three years moving ahead and really just continue what we've been doing all these years. We've been proactive about it. It's been happening every year and, you know, we have the results available. There's nothing to hide and we make sure that, you know, we make our, our learning environments as, um, conducive as possible for the students who are trying to, you know, do their jobs and learn. Any questions about that?
I just have a question about the radon testing. All our elementary schools and probably most of our schools are above ground, like we don't have basement classrooms. Is there truly a need for radon testing at like surface level rooms like that? Isn't it typically basements, underground areas where it pools up?
Where it impacts residential areas, cause you have a basement, you're below grade. So the, there are no real good protocols. So, um, the recommendation is anything in contact with the ground. So we don't have a basement, but we do have, you know, big giant ranchers. So we do have, um, you know, classrooms on, you know, slab on grade where you have that, you know, that interaction with, with the earth. So that is the recommendation now. It's, we don't test every classroom. It's more of a, a spot check. The current, um, PDE, not PDE, um, EPA environmental recommendation is, uh, every two thousand feet to have a sample. Now, you know, every two thousand feet at, say, Donegan would be different because you only have so much in contact with the ground. So to do a, you might do one sample on the third floor, just, you know, to, to make sure. But we would focus the tests on the ground floor, what's in contact with the ground. So you might have more, more samples at a spring garden, uh, or as many samples at Spring Garden as you would at Broccle. Even though Broccle is three times the size, it's four stories. So we're working with the testing company to, you know, fine tune where we do it. But right, um, the primary attention is slab on grade in contact with, with the earth.
Yeah, it's, it's pennies on the dollar when you look at the size of our budget and twenty-two thousand dollars or whatever. I just find it interesting that no one ever talked about radon in schools. Then all of a sudden, we had a report that, like you said, was an analogy is more than any science in it. And now it's been a panic for a lot of school districts, but it certainly hasn't hurt to do another round and see what pops up.
No, absolutely. I think really, I mean, it's great education for our community. We want to make sure our schools are safe, obviously, but I, I believe, you know, kids at home every day, like if you've got a basement bedroom, you're at way more risk to this than you are going to school for seven hours every day. So, you know, the community understands and know that, like, hey, I should have, I'll get my house checked or tested. And then there's things you can do to, to, to address that, so.
What, for, what are the budget implications of keeping, keeping up both the, checking on the, the, the gases and specifically radon? And if we get to a situation where we have to start making cuts, what does that look like for us? I guess how much does it cost for this program now? And where, where is that being subsidized? Is that something that's in danger that if we need to start looking at cutting, that might be a realistic possibility?
The, uh, the, the spot air quality testing for all the different factors, about eighteen thousand for half the district. And then the radon in particular is, is about twenty-three thousand for half the district. So it's about forty thousand all in, um, on a, you know, an annual basis. And that's, I mean, the radon is, you know, it was, it was like four thousand, ten years ago. And now it's, you know, obviously much more, so.
Any other questions? Would we have partners, whether it's through the city or the Health Bureau?
Would we have partners, whether it's through the city or the health bureau, that as we're testing for radon, could just provide information if you are interested in testing for radon? You know, we're not going to do that on behalf of families, but where residential property owners could find more information on how to test for some of these things at home?
It's a great idea. Um, I think a lot of big box stores, you can get radon kits. Um, the city is probably a resource. Um, pick a little search, probably find lots of folks willing to help with that, answer those questions.
Well, that was our last, uh, information item. Other recent surprises. So we're good. Um, that just brings us to the agenda items that'll be coming up on the September twenty second regular board meeting. Um, we'll hear more or to have a chance to, to officially vote on the air quality and radon testing. Um, given the, the slight cost associated with it. Um, but there's nothing additional to discuss about that agenda item. Um, and then we've got four point oh two, which are some custodial supplies.
This is, you've seen these over the last year or so complying with our policy, uh, for board approval for purchases over twenty five thousand.
Any questions or concerns about any of those? Yeah.
Um, I don't know, Mr. Stein, you may know this, so I don't know here, you might have the data. Who, how long have we had this contract with the Ramsco?
We've been working with the Ramsco for many years. In its current form, maybe three or three, three or four, uh, was, it was bought, Ramsco bought the previous vendor, uh, who we've been working with. Um, for probably eight or nine before that.
And just a reminder for the record, how, how many? What's the bidding process for that? Like, how often do we shop around for best prices?
We're continually checking prices with the vendor and trying to keep them honest. Um, they're a state contract vendor. And we are actually going through a process now to get an RFP out to look at, you know, what are those high dollar items that we put out for larger competitions, see if we can't shave a few more dollars off our spend on Coachella supplies. And, uh, again, keep our vendors honest, um, and getting, you know, toilet paper, floor wax, paper towels, those kind of items, um, priced on a larger scale for multiple additional vendors.
So when you say that that's continual, I imagine that as that needs to be renewed, that's when like, oh, who else does clean concentrated cleaning, cleaning chemicals? It's not, oh, it's April, we're doing that now, right? It's.
On the cleaning chemical side, like we have a pollution control system. So that's like deployed to all the custodial closets across the district. So we're looking at that as part of our, like, okay, now's the time. Maybe now's the time to look at that and say, well, someone else can do better. We're willing to change for like a, you know, a three year period and a longer investment to come in and hijack everything and, and move in with a new, a new system, got trained people, new chemicals. That's, I want to say proprietary, but it's, it's a system we've already invested in, in the district. We'll be looking at that, but then, you know, additionally checking on, I mean, it's state contract purchasing, so it's, it's legal pricing. We're just looking to do a little better on the competitive side to see if we can do better for sure.
I have a process question. Is, um, it's just with, you know, these are the items that we're going to be voting on in the board meeting. Is there a way, um, in the point of order of how we do business in these meetings? Can we split the contracts in the air quality and the radon testing so that we can vote for them separately? I would like to do a little bit more research on the radon and we're, we're, we're pinching pennies right now and I, I would prefer pinching more pennies than spending if, if radon testing is not as, um, needed. I, I, I want to ponder it. I want to look at a little bit more, but just the question is, can we split these items to vote in the meeting in October? Thank you.
I would just for a point of order, um, we can certainly split the items with a, you know, a motion and a second, a majority wanting to split those. Um, or we could leave them as is and however you want to do it, but just for a point of order, you can, we can definitely split up items if that's what the majority wants.
Would we do that at committee or would we do that before voting at the board meeting?
I mean, either is fine.
Okay, um, then that brings us to courtesy of the floor. About anything? No? All right. Uh, open forum for board members? No pressure, no pressure. Just, you know, open invitation, that's all. Um, then that wraps up our facilities. Committee will have a couple minutes, two minutes before curriculum.
Back to my meeting. Three minutes is a little aggressive, but maybe six, eight. Um, all right, we'll begin the, did you say nine? Yeah, you can leave it at nine, that's fine too.
All right.
We'll begin the curriculum committee meeting with courtesy of the floor for agenda items only. Seeing none, we have no discussion items. We'll move right into our two information items. Uh, first up is the AP Equity and Excellence data from the last school year, twenty four, twenty five.
Absolutely. So, uh, I'd like to welcome, uh, Ms. Kavakie and, uh, Ms. Richards with us this evening, um, our two high school assistant principals for curriculum and instruction, and I'm really grateful they're joining us. Um, on an annual basis, we present our AP Equity and Excellence. Let's ground ourselves and what it, what are we talking about? So in BASD, we, uh, use this as one point in one metric and that we look at to just see how are we doing across the district, specifically in our AP programming? And we in BASD define equity and excellence as seventy percent of the students who took the course got a three or higher on the AP exam. So in the data that you're looking at, you'll notice the mean scores, you'll notice this percentage of students taking an AP exam. In some instances, you might say, wow, that's a really high mean. Why isn't it yellow? Most likely it's because it's not above that seventy percent threshold. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Ms. Richards and Mrs. Kavakie in just one second, but I'm going to also bring your attention to, we have a, a Freedom document and a Liberty document. And, um, we included up at the top, the, um, what we just defined what BASD calls AP Equity and Excellence. The college board has their own definition and that is the percentage of seniors, percentage of the graduating class that had a three or higher on at least one AP exam. So how many kids who walked across the stage of graduation last year had a three or higher on an AP exam? You can see that represented for Freedom High School, really excited for our current senior class at that twenty one point one percent. Um, I want to point out for Liberty and I'll let Ms. Richards speak more to this. You're like, what happened to twenty, the twenty twenty five data? Where is it? Well, despite Ms. Richards' significant peppering of the college board, uh, multiple tickets put in with the college board, they don't have that data for us right now. Actually, the data we're relying on for twenty three and twenty four is the old data we had, but, um, we'll get that data at some point in time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tara and Marissa.
Well, first we want to begin by just saying that as you look at this data, we're very proud of our teachers for providing their rigorous and relevant instruction as well of our, as well as our students who, as you know, it is quite a marathon to take an AP course. Um, and the fact that they, they have put forth their hard work year after year and semester after semester. And we're very fortunate because each time we come before you each year, uh, our results get stronger and stronger. So we're excited to share those with you.
Uh, yes, overall, there is so much to celebrate regarding our AP Equity and Excellence report for both schools for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And we're going to discuss a few of those trends with you right now.
So as you can see from the document that Dr. Leeson shared, we're very proud of our enrollment in our AP courses. More students are being exposed to rigorous and college level content on a regular basis. And at the same time, we're very excited to see the increase that we saw again this year in participation. At Liberty, we had seven hundred and fifty five students enrolled in our AP courses, which is an increase from the previous school year where we only had seven hundred and twenty five students enrolled in our AP courses. We are thrilled to say that we had an eighty seven percent participation rate in students taking the AP exam. Last year, our participation rate was eighty percent. Um, but this is an amazing yearly increase from when I started in this position five years ago, when participation was only thirty six percent.
Before I talk about Freedom, I just want to congratulate Tara and Liberty for that awesome accomplishment, um, in five years and she deserves that. Um, so at Freedom, we had seven hundred and two students enrolled in our AP courses, which is an increase from the twenty three, twenty four school year where we had only five hundred and seventy two students enrolled in our AP courses. Um, we had an increase of one hundred and thirty students taking an AP course from our previous school year. We had five hundred and ninety three students take the exam, which gave us a participation rate of eighty four point four seven percent. And this was an increase of ninety eight students participating in the AP exam compared to the twenty three, twenty four school year. As Dr. Leeson mentioned, the BASD defines the excellence and equity as an average score of three or higher with at least seventy percent participation. Our goal is to strengthen our college board AP score. Our college board defines the AP score as the proportion of graduating class that scored a three or higher on the AP exam at some point in their high school career. At Freedom, as you can see on the report, our college board AP score is eighteen point eight percent. And it brings me joy to report that nine teachers achieved AP, BASD's AP Equity and Excellence score. We recognize all these teachers at our opening of school faculty meeting in August, along with all of our AP teachers for their excellent work.
At Liberty, we are very proud of our thirteen teachers this year who have attained BASD's AP score. This is an increase from only five teachers that attained the school last year. Uh, we also recognize these teachers at our opening of school faculty meeting. And we'll be recognizing them again with thank you notes from their students at our AP breakfast in a couple weeks. We're also very proud to be remaining steady with our mean scores at both schools. At Liberty, we're happy to say that our overall mean exam score increased from two point eight one in the twenty three, twenty four school year to two point eight seven in the twenty four, twenty five school year. We're thrilled to see that each year the score continues to improve.
At Freedom, the overall mean exam score for the school increased from three point zero one in the twenty three, twenty four school year to three point three zero in the twenty four, twenty five school year. Last year, I was so excited to share that our average mean score had reached a three. And this year I'm even more proud to announce our continued improvement. We make it a common practice at both schools of looking at any contributing factors that led to our score increases as well as intervening in areas of improvement. We're encouraging our teachers to dive into the data offered by AP Central to target areas of improvement at their own practice. We're focusing on targeted work with our new AP teachers and teachers in need of support. We're continuing to create opportunities for our AP teachers to collaborate cross departmentally, especially during their monthly AP cohort meeting. Our first one was today. Um, and discuss challenges, shared resources and identify strategies that alleviate, elevate student learning.
In addition to many of the professional monthly learning groups that Marissa mentioned, each school is kind of doing it differently from monthly meetings to walkthroughs. We've also found that Caroline Stenson, our new director for state and district partnerships at EP Central, to be an invaluable resource to both of us as well as the teachers. Her regular meetings and shared resources have helped us fully leverage AP Central to support BASD's grading and assessment initiative. Our teachers appreciate virtual learning professional opportunities that she provides, which they can access as needed to help instruction and support students. And most importantly, to not feel alone. In, in many of the schools, they are the only person teaching that particular AP course. So this is a nice way to virtually connect with teachers across the country.
So thank you for your very hard work, uh, Mrs. Kavakie and Ms. Richards. Um, one thing that, uh, I want to shed light is, it's a lot of work to teach an AP course and get these results. This is not, um, you know, a walk in the park, but it also is a strong reflection on all of the teachers, all of the courses that led up to that point. A child does not just walk into AP calculus and that's the first time that they've, um, had a strong program of study. And so I give a lot of credit to our teachers, um, across our K to twelve, uh, program. I give them all a lot of credit for this great work. I also will, um, make the analogy, Dr. Silva, here it comes, a baseball analogy that, uh, like they say in Moneyball, let's get them on base, right? And so what I see in a lot of these results is, you know, um, in an English language and composition course, when, you know, over eighty percent of the kids are taking the exam and getting of, well above a three point O mean, that means if we get that kid in the class, they're most likely going to find success, right? So we got to get them on base and we're going to get some runs. Um, the last thing I'm going to mention, there was a lot of positivity. This is a little tidbit of not positivity. Um, one of the successful pieces to our AP program over the years has been the utilization of Title Four funds. And so, um, for a number of years now, we have put out opportunities for kids to get their oftentimes a minimum of their first exam paid for, sometimes a second exam paid for, et cetera. Um, because we'll, we'll use our Title Four funds for that. As we look towards the twenty six, twenty seven school year, it is not looking positive for Title Four funds. And so we'll have to do a little thinking on our part of how do we maintain opportunities? What does that look like, et cetera, um, in the absence of that funding? So that's it on AP.
I would just add too, talking about the, the test, ninety dollars per exam. I know kids get one for free, even families who are not considered poor, um, middle class or lower middle class, looking at three or four hundred dollars a year for exams is just unrealistic for a lot of people. That hundred dollars a pop or a hundred and eighty a semester, depending on how many classes you have, is just, it's a really tough hurdle. Just to as, you know, just take a test. A lot of parents don't understand, kids don't understand the college aspirations for it, but I'd say it's, I mean, now's a terrible time talking funds, but something to consider in the future if we ever get realistic federal money again. Maybe help out other families as well. And I don't know what the cutoff is or how that works, but I think there's a lot of families who are well above that poverty line of free and reduced that still find challenges to come up with a hundred, two hundred bucks at a time.
In agreement.
Yeah. Dr. White?
Thank you. Two questions. With the funding of the AP exam test, is AP thinking about doing something for forecasting potential federal funding cuts?
Um, not that I'm aware of at this time. We do get, uh, waivers for students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Um, and there is often waivers from the college board for students who are eligible for free lunch. But, um, oftentimes the state of Pennsylvania has kind of in the middle of the planning and preparation. They'll say, we can provide a little extra funding for the students who qualify for reduced lunch. And so we can reduce those fees significantly for those students, but that doesn't apply forever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little delusional thinking the college board would do any kind of like that. Anyway, the second question. I noticed in the data where there's more than a hundred percent of students taking the exam, meaning they didn't take the course. And in those particular courses, there's a more significant number of ones. And two is dropping down the median. So I'm wondering in the report, is it possible to eliminate the, the scores? Cause I, I don't know. I'm guessing that the, the students who did not attend the course and took the exam perhaps did score so highly. I don't know, but it would be really nice to know if that is impacting the mean.
So, um, we do look at that. So we do look at that information at a teacher, at a course level. But as we share publicly, there are some students who took human geography, which is not a course that we offer, right? And sometimes find success and, and we've reported on the past, so we're just mean to, trying to be consistent.
Dr. Beck, coolly.
Just another question or note on the reports that caught my eye was the pre-calculus, AP pre-calculus, which I thought was fantastic to see for a bunch of reasons. Those enrollments were really high, the students are doing really well, and that strikes me as a great on-ramp, not only to AP Calc, but just to other AP work. And I was curious if that's the way that's kind of working.
I know Marissa and I both have talked about it as with Caroline. And Caroline was complimenting the district's enrollment in both AP African American Studies as well as AP Pre-Calc, because they consider those almost like a feeder AP. And she not only looked at our data, but I believe she tracked our students. And so some of those students that wouldn't necessarily have taken another AP class did their senior year. And I believe all but four went to a four-year college. So it was, it was very good. Yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Lozey?
Just curious to know, for those who, I heard in the reports of both schools, pretty amazing growth of the program. What would you say at either school, or maybe just in general, it contributes to the growth of students wanting to be part of the AP program? And if you've not tracked that, that's fine.
We probably all have a different answer. We do course selection a little bit differently at both high schools now. We have the same program. We each kind of switched over the past couple of years. And I think with the teachers taking an active role in the course selection process, by knowing all the courses in their department, they can actually let a student visit a class. We've created brand-new videos of students in those classes so they know what to expect. I think we're seeing, because we use self-selection as the way they get in, we're seeing a lot more gaining the confidence to do it.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, like our guidance counselors talking individually with the students, like going over all the options, what's their career path? Really working together with our career pathways, liaison, Amy Myers, like what is the best pathway for this student? And to guide them into those decisions.
Patrick?
I'm going to add on to that. My daughter had Herr Norwood for German, and after German IV, there was no option. You were taking AP German your senior year, and you were sitting for the test. And it was just expected.
It was high expectations.
Yes, and everyone out of fear did it. Took the class and also took, I think there was only one kid that didn't take the exam. But then kudos to Herr Norwood, he also offered, because it was in, in the spring, and all the students that had it in the fall, he did after-school tutoring and practice sessions the entire second spring, or the spring semester, to get the students prepared. Like went above and beyond what anyone would expect, so. But yes, it was a very high expectation and they all met it.
Yeah, when we believe students can and want to learn, they will.
That's the number one benefit of measuring both equity and excellence. And the reason why we're increasing that index is because there's a can and should be successful element. There was a time in our district where our enrollment wasn't as high because maybe some folks doubted whether the students could, and therefore directed them into other, other less rigorous programs. And then there was a time where, you know, there might have been not as, as strong as an emphasis on participating in the test. But then your strongest students would elevate the average score because they were tended to be more successful. But when you emphasize participation and excellence, involvement and average score, that is a fair measure of, of, of a high school. And high schools all around the country get their AP index every year, and we watch it like a hawk. And the fact that both of those factors, both of those contributing factors are increasing means that we are committed to AP Equity and Excellence, and that's what a good program is. So congratulations, Maureen, Tara, and Marissa.
Thank you.
Another question, Mr. Lozey?
I would be curious to know, and this is something I can get after the meeting. Because I remember when we talked about this, if it wasn't last year, the year before, I'd ask questions about what demographically it looked like, right? I would be curious to know what ways that those teachers who are, and the way that course selection is going, ways that we're engaging those students who AP is not a thing in their home, or in their home, or like, I'm not doing that. And then students who are coming from some of our more at-risk or at-promised backgrounds, and coming from schools where maybe that, I don't want to put it that way, not that our schools don't push that. Basically, our, our kids that wouldn't typically be in AP, that have the capabilities, have the aptitude, you know, and teachers are like, oh my goodness, you can do that. I tell the story all the time, Matty Vanshaw at Freedom. I wasn't an AP student, but when we did tracking, I was in an applied math class, and he pulled me aside like halfway. He's like, you will not be in this class next year. You know, and I, I remember that, and if, I know that our teachers are doing that. So I'm wondering, outside of that realm, when it comes to AP, if there are ways that teachers are seeing, you know, little Mikey, you know, in the back of a corner, like you have the capability, let's get you in here. So that's, and especially for our students of color that may not be as involved. I don't know who is or who isn't, but if, if those numbers aren't looking as equitable, what are ways that we're doing that to increase that as well?
Not only recognizing when they know the student, but what are some of our other indices saying? If you're a proficient student on the eighth-grade PSSA English Language Arts class, I think someone should be asking you, are you planning to take AP classes when you get to high school? Or if you take the 10th-grade ELA Keystone exam and you're proficient or advanced, come on, take, you should be in the advanced placement classes. So there are data ways of looking at it, that, and we know our kids, we know our kids' data. But the best way is what you're describing, Winston, to have a connection with a kid, know their skill, and then push them into that direction. That's how you get that equity piece higher.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, 3.02 is an attendance update, Dr. Lee Sin?
Yes, so one of our district-wide goals is attendance. And so I'd like to invite Ms. Bachman to come on up and chat with us a little bit. So when we talk about attendance, one thing that I think we have to mention is synergy. And so last year at this time, we brought on a new student information management system. And you're thinking, okay, well, we're still checking if the kids are there or not, so what's the big deal? The how of taking attendance did change a little bit. And I will let Ms. Bachman provide much more detail about that, as she is the expert on all things student information management system. But if we could go to the next slide. Let's ground ourselves in a couple definitions, and Ms. Bachman chime in as, as we're talking about ADA and ADM and all the fun stuff. But let's ground ourselves in the, in a couple definitions as we go forward. First, when a student misses 10% of a school year, which in 180 days is 18 days, or on average, two days per month, that is our definition of chronic absenteeism. That is not excused or unexcused, that's any type of absence. ADA, ADM is our average daily attendance divided by our average daily membership. It's that ratio. We start learning about ratios in sixth grade. And our membership is the total number of students we have in a particular building versus the number of students that we have in attendance. Would you add anything to that enrollment metric? No, okay. As it relates to absences, I'm going to let Ms. Bachman take that one. This is where I think our definitions for synergy really come into play.
And so the definitions of an absence changed slightly at the secondary level in the sense that previous with the School Plus, we did take period attendance. However, we weren't able to really accurately track the minutes lost and so forth by period. With synergy, we were able to do so, and during our implementation discussions, we felt that as Dr. Silva moved forward with his goal of improving attendance, that we would change our way of tracking the secondary attendance in the sense that at the high school level, we have four periods. And looking across those four periods, if you miss two periods, you're missing a lot of instructional time. Therefore, we decided that that would be deemed as an absence. If you are absent two or more periods, you are absent for the day. And then at the middle school level, where there is nine periods in a day, again, that is the same perspective there in that if you are missing four periods, you've missed a significant amount of instructional time. Therefore, we mark you absent for the day. The system does that calculation automatically and puts the absence in. Secretaries can override that absence, should there be some, you know, underlying reason for those absences within those periods. That can always be corrected if there's, if something else is found. But that was a significant shift in our secondary level. At our elementary level, for the most part, it remained the same. So at the secondary level, it's period attendance. At the elementary level, it's daily attendance. Because they, you know, at the secondary level have periods, have passing time and so forth. And at the elementary, that is just not how elementary rolls, so a little bit different there.
And that leads to school and school activities, et cetera, don't contribute to an absence.
Correct. And before we go into any of the charts or any of the numbers, I did want to make one comment in terms of chronic absenteeism and ADA, ADM. Some folks have the thought that, well, if we have a high ADA, ADM, we're good. We should have a, you know, a low chronic absenteeism. That is not the case. You can have a high ADA, ADM, but also have a high chronic absenteeism. And that's because, again, ADA, ADM, average, okay? So you have those students who are chronically absent, but then you have those students that are never absent and have perfect attendance. And their attendance may be, you know, they're there 90% of the time. So they're offsetting those who are chronically absent. So you can't just make those two numbers, you know, look the same, because they don't.
I would also add to that statement, which is, I think, significant. If on average, if you're accumulating two absences, absences per month, you're chronically absent. So when we look at chronic absenteeism, thinking about it from the child's perspective, I might be absent Monday and Tuesday. But I'm there Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so I'm contributing to the ADA, ADM overall, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's just a different two kids who are absent on Wednesday and Thursday, or the following Friday. And so it's a different, when we look at that building-wide percentage, it's not representative of all the kids who were, it's not, we can't add the two together, okay? So let's go to the next slide. From a disparate perspect, perspective, this is our 2223 versus 2324 versus 2425. As we look at our 2425 data, you know, we're seeing, you know, more similar to 2223, a slight decrease. And this is a trend generally as we look at our data. However, I would say, and I think Ms. Bachman would agree with me, that our data from 2425 is probably a more accurate representation of who was in school.
I, I'd agree with that.
So let's go to the next slide. Things were getting really tiny, so we separated the tables from the chart. So you'll see the data again on the chart. So this is just a, a table representation of what our ADA, ADM looks like for the middle school and the high school. Similar trends persist of what we saw with the district level. And if you could scroll, there you go to the graphically what is represented. You notice that Nishman High, Middle School, for instance, is seeing a nice trend for 2425. Whereas, you know, Liberty and Freedom High School were more accurately calculating their absences, and we're seeing a decrease. Now let's look at the elementary level. We have all 16 elementaries there. A variety of trends persist. And if you could go to the next slide, we see what is happening at each elementary school graphically. Now, as we look at chronic absenteeism, we're shifting gears to look at how many students were absent more than 10% of the school year. We can see almost the reverse happening. And we see that in the 2425 school year, we had 23.38% of students who were chronically absent. If we scroll down to the next slide, we see that in chart view. And then we see graphically represented what is going on at the secondary schools. If we could go to elementary, thank you. And then graphically, we have that represented. And if for some reason I'm going too fast, or if you have a question, please stop us. Yes.
I'm just curious how this overlaps with transancy in some of our schools. Like when would a student, you know, say a student's been absent for a couple days, and now we realize they're, they've switched attendance and they're attending a different school, how does that work in the system?
The chronic absenteeism, that will persist because we're looking at, you know, the child themselves. So it's not like it, it's not considered.
All right. Any questions about any of the tables and charts before we move on to the next piece here? And so just to, to represent some of the work, really, you know, once we have them in our building, they're ours, where we've got to worry about curriculum and instruction and assessment. But getting them in the door is really a communication campaign. And so a couple, I would say in BASD, and I must give Mrs. Herner a lot of credit for her work. She's worked with all of the buildings, she's worked with PTOs. She has an entire committee that, last year at this time, Eric Fontanaz and Charmaine Aguilar were walking around to different businesses on the South Side and putting these posters up in barber shops and restaurants, and just talking to local community partners regarding, hey, if you see one of our kids, feel free to point out this sign to them. They were in multiple languages, they continue to be posted around the district. You know, we need to have enriching and engaging opportunities for students. We need a multi-tiered system of support. You hear from us often about MTSS, and that system persists as it relates to attendance about, what are our foundational supports? You know, how are we providing early intervention? How are we preventing absences from occurring? We use the Student Assistance Program when we're noticing trends. We use SATE plans, Student Attendance Intervention Plans. We work with our truancy officers. Something that at a building level and a district level we are doing is data monitoring, looking at early warning system. And, you know, how can we be engaging families, talking to students about, hey, we're noticing a trend, let's address that now before it gets too late? You know, a welcoming and supportive school environment is a key to success here. And we're having a lot of conversations, really simple, but across the Penns, state of Pennsylvania, there's breakfast for all. So breakfast is not a barrier to kids coming to school, because every kid has the opportunity to eat breakfast in school. We're doing lots of family and community engagement, we're forging those partnerships with businesses. And we have that integrated approach, we have community schools, we have wellness centers, we have many wraparound services for our children. And so we have hard work to continue to do. We're not satisfied with where our data is, however, the data is what it is. There have been many campaigns were done by these buildings. Brockle, you know, which, what's the home that has the best, you know, daily attendance? And Donegan, let's have donuts for the kids and the families to celebrate the fact that they're doing well with their attendance. And I, you know, that was a great one, because we weren't just celebrating the child, it was also the parents. At elementary, the parents are getting them to us, right? And so we're celebrating the parents as well, come and have a donut with us. And so there's a lot of wonderful things happening across our school district. But again, maintaining that campaign of school is good, and it's important to be in school to learn.
And I would just like to add, from a system standpoint, we do have, Dr. Lee Sin had touched on MTSS. We do have a module in Synergy for MTSS. And I know that our SEAL team and our Student Services Office are just loving that. And because they just have the ability to put the plans in place and interventions in place, and have that data all in one spot, we have that. As Dr. Lee Sin had touched on, we do have an early warning system module built into the system as well that identifies no risk, some risk, high risk. And lastly, we have the system, the And lastly, we have the system, the attendance analytics reports where the principals can go in real time along with the early warning system to take a look at the student data.
Excellent. Questions? Dr. White?
Thank you. The data can tell so many stories, but a lot of it is the questions that we're asking the data and how, how do we, we gather that? A couple of years ago, I was asking about, you know, Dr. Lee, you had mentioned a safe and welcoming environment. And, and I know that sometimes at the secondary level, school could be a scary place if there's a fight in the halls and then they don't feel, students sometimes don't feel safe coming back the next day. And so I'm glad to hear that there are these early warning systems and triggers that could help the S E L. Why don't you want to go to this class? Or, because, you know, the students will skip classes that they don't feel confident in. And this is very much that drill down in the secondary when it can be so challenging for their emotional well-being of, can they be successful? Can they feel like they're welcome, et cetera? So I'm very glad to see that the system is going to help really narrow down the, the warnings, the, the red alerts, the, the way that we can keep an eye on the kids as a community. And I just, I, I just don't want to take away though the, the, the reasons why kids don't attend their classes. I think we really need to be, as a community, mindful of what that means. You know, maybe a kid that they're sitting next to in class is unfavorable or something like, who knows? But we, you know, I, I don't want to see those kids ending up with a student services. You know, now you're getting expelled because you're not doing whatever. And so I'm, I mean, there are so many, so many data points that we can really drill down to. But I think if there's a way to be mindful of an emotional need for one of the reasons why absenteeism starts beyond a physical barrier. I think we're on the track of one of the biggest concerns that I have for our school environment right now. Thanks.
Other questions?
The good news is that synergy can track attendance down to the minute with precision and clarity that we've never seen before. The bad news is synergy can track attendance down to the minute with a precision that we've never seen before. And so some of the definitional issues that Marie was talking about, I think described the difference between last year and this year when the two different student information systems were recording the attendance. Independent of that, it is what happens in tier one, tier two, tier three, school culture, success in class, feeling safe and comfortable. All of those factors are constantly part of the conversation that we're having on our pupil services team and in, among our principals. But if we have to have a step go backwards to make our data even better, that looks not as good as the previous year, I'll take it because at least we know what, 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 what it's measuring.
Dr. Beck, do you have a question?
Just in terms of the communication going out to families, I didn't know if that also included or could include at some point, thinking about the notification, like sort of the automatic notification that is sent to, you know, parents, guardians, whoever is sort of listed in the system when an absent occurs. And if there's some best practices, because those can be very, you know, I don't know if others have received, I've, as a, as a parent have received these, you know, this is, this is Liberty High School and computer voice saying child name was not in school today. And it's like, there's one level that now, at least as a parent, I know, like, wait a minute, I totally thought my kid was supposed to be in school. Like, that's conveyed. But if that's also a moment and a type of communication that can change the, the manner in which that back and forth occurs. And understood those can't be personal calls because that could totally swamp. You know, it's not like, we have to figure out how to automate those. But if there's something about that communication that's part of this bigger strategy to just change the tone of that, just as a.
Interestingly enough, I, I was working with and will be working with our, the vendor that we use for our mass notifications. Because we have had attendance calling for some time. But as you stated, the message is really just a computer generated. And so we can massage that message. I don't know to what degree could it be a, you know, a more normal voice that is speaking and maybe giving the parent better and better information that they're like actually really listening to the message, you know, like, hey, your child was absent today. We missed them in school today. Please make sure that, you know, and something of that nature.
That, that's thinking about that communication in the same way you're being so mindful about thinking about the posters that are going out in the community and all of the interaction with the community in that way. That's great.
Yeah. So the evidence that's out there and the research says that the best communication is actually from the teacher. And so at elementary, you might find that the first communication is, hey, I noticed so, so and so is absent. But at the secondary level, it just gets that so complicated with attendance that we need systems and routines that work for everybody. And so then we find ourselves in conflict with the best practice, right? And so we have reflection on how we can make things better. Yes.
And attendance is such a fight, like one student, one family at a time. And every day it's something different. And it's just, I think, like you said, it's relationships, it's at the building level, it's teachers, it's, it's everybody. But this, this is great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. No other information items. We have four agenda items for approval at the September 22nd meeting. The first two are service agreements with IU 20 and 21. The first one is for our non-public parent family engagement services. And you see that through Title One funds and the breakdown is there is below. And the second one again is for non-public services. Again, parent family engagement. You can see the breakdown on that for St. Mike's. Questions on those two? Next is our leader in me coaching that we've had in place for quite some time. This is for the current school year, 10 sessions. You see the, the price tag for that. Yes.
Just about that, I feel like we've been doing this custom coaching for quite a few years. Is this specific to a new building or like how long does this need to go on for?
I'm sorry. I can answer that. So Dr. Silva and I are having similar conversations as it relates to leader and me. And as we talk about future budget, what does that look like? I do think that things like this need to say, okay, what are the must have, what are the nice to haves and what are the must haves, right? And I think that for future years, we're having those conversations about how can we, you know, tailor that back. So, and this is for all of our buildings with leader and me coaching.
Yeah, not to, I'm not saying we should back away from leader and me at all. I, I think it's a great, great program. I just didn't know how long the actual, I feel like the coaching's been going on for a while. So like, at what point are we self-sufficient and at what point, you know, just again, because of budget.
All right. And then the last item is an update to the Community School Improvement Plan for Brokaw. And the plan is attached there for the upcoming 25, 26 school year.
If you don't mind, I just want to make a comment, similar to the comment I made previously regarding Title Four. So we would have gotten this approved back in August. But on the Friday before teachers came back, we were notified by P D E that there was an over $200,000 reduction in C S I funding. And so this plan represents a significant revision. Dr. Reese, we're going to give a lot of credit to for making that revision to really align funding to her goals around helping students achieve and grow at Brokaw Middle School. But I just want to highlight that the reduction in funding coming from the federal government to P D E translated to what's happening at Brokaw Middle School.
Question?
Thank you to Dr. Lee Sin and Dr. Reese for the scramble to adjust the C S I plan to the new smaller budget and prioritizing students and learning needs. Again, another curve ball, clawback, as Mr. Aristocizian would call it, further causing challenges.
Mr. Lozey?
Please forgive me because I, I know that it's in here, you know, as lengthy as it is. So what are we, what are we looking at in terms of cuts? Like how many positions, how many things?
So I can speak to that. So the reduction was a family development specialist, a transition coordinator, some contracted services. And they had a teacher who was a math teacher serving in their R three room. We had to eliminate the R three room and that position then became, went back to the classroom. We did not eliminate any classroom teachers. We did not increase class size. We didn't eliminate any, I would say, critical core functions of the building. However, when we're talking about elevating, you know, a school that needs a, a lot of support, we had to do some elimination of, of services there.
Thank you. I just, I, I, I knew that. I just wanted to ask in this forum because not to do any grandstanding, again, when we look at the implications of, of, of what these cuts look like nationally. This is what it looks like for our kids, especially the kids who need it most. You know, it's just frustrating because we often hear the tagline of schools being failing schools. And my school, my alma mater is not a failing school. But when you see that there are needs that need to be there to support that and, you know, because there are frankly, people at the helm that don't know what they're doing and have put us in positions where we have to cut this, it's, it affects our children. So I hope that it's on the record that the media sees, that the community sees that this madhouse that is running our country educationally is affecting our children. And so a school that has been doing so well to be on track, when people talk about schools quote unquote failing, kids not learning good, quote unquote, and we were doing the things to do that. And now we have to cut the supports that are needed to help our kids get where they need to be. It's just, it's disappointing. So I just, I want it said in this forum that that sucks.
I couldn't have stated it better, Mr. Lozey.
Yep. You're absolutely right. And Brokaw was a school that fought like hell for many years to be successful. And then when this program came into place and the designation was there and through hard work of Mr. Motto, Mr. Horlick, and now Dr. Reese really worked to make Brokaw as successful as any element or any middle school anywhere. And it, it's really just a punch in the gut to lose this much money, like the night before school starts. That's the world we live in at the moment. Meanwhile, I wouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that our charter schools continue to fail, our cyber charters at, you know, rates that would, we would all be in jail if our schools perform the way P A Cyber and Commonwealth perform. But no one cares about that as we continue to see, as our legislators pretend to be fighting for a budget which just doesn't come through because they don't even want to go back to Harrisburg and do their work. So anyway, I'll stop.
I have a question that I would like to ask Dr. Lee Sin, please. The, the plan itself, the, the C S I school plan, that you have this battery army of, of, of representatives from various places within B A S D and in the community as part of the steering committee. Can you summarize the, the, the idea of the steering committee in terms of how it's going to be addressing, holding on to this achievement of Brokaw? So that this, so that the money that is ripped away isn't going to be this devastating, you know, knock to everybody's confidence. I mean, Brokaw's, Brokaw is our success story. And, and so how is the steering committee going to help maintain that?
So Brokaw's going to do excellent work no matter what. And the culture, so when we talk about welcoming environments and a safe and supportive environment, Brokaw gets a gold star. And I'll just say that there, I was at their open house Wednesday, Thursday of last week. I forget what day it was. And it was more of a family reunion than it was an open house, meet the teachers. We were kissing babies. They were cheering. It was phenomenal. And the turnout matched any other middle school I've been to for open house. So Brokaw has excellent people in place. They're doing excellent work. As it relates to our educational program, we are going to continue to support them. But the, there are routines in place to support them. And that is their quarterly routine, which happens every marking period. There is a huge team. And all those people you see listed come together, including P D E representatives to review what is the data? What is going well? Where are areas for improvement? Let's strategize. Let's talk about how we can rally around Brokaw Middle School to continue seeing them thrive and succeed. So there are systems in place that include the I U, P V, like everyone and anyone. And we do significant data analysis on a quarterly basis.
Anybody else? All right. That's our four agenda items for the 22nd, courtesy of the Florida visitors. Only once. Strantalics twice, nothing. No, it's all good. No, we're.
Thank you for coming. I'll get you later. We'll talk.
Uh, open forum, we have exec session, student discipline, legal personnel and contract negotiation. It just sounds worse than it is.
It'll be brief.
Nothing else? Motion to adjourn?